Two o'clock, I think we will go ahead and get the study session underway. And I will turn it over to Ms. Driscoll or Mr. Schreck, whoever's going to be leading us off today.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I'll turn it over to Ms. Driscoll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marty Schuker, our consultant on the LIVS Salina Plan update is back. We are on presentation three of five. If you're wondering, huh, five, I could have swore it was four, Lauren, that's okay, because that's what we originally said. But this is such an interesting topic with a lot of information to cover. We've actually added a study session date. So we will also be providing a study session on the 19th of April. That is a new date, 19th of April, for reviewing tools and techniques related to economic incentives associated with housing. And then the strategic program or kind of the policy framework discussion will be on May 10th. We could scooch that a week. We had originally scheduled it for the first Monday in May. So those are just some revised dates. And we'll, we'll talk about those again at the end. But I just wanted to get that right out there, that we have added some dates. And we've got a lot of material to cover. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Marty Schuker.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Well, it's good to be with all of you this afternoon. And by the way, if it looks like I'm looking up in the sky, it's, it's sort of adjustments because I've got two monitors and they're elevated above me. And that's where everything is. So forgive me for that if it, I, I am actually looking at you, but it doesn't look like it. So anyway, it's good to be with you this afternoon. I think, I think you'll find today's discussion really interesting. It's in four parts. And the first part will be a recap of some of the material that we covered last week, just to make sure that we have continuity. The second is a discussion of what new forms of housing are going to look like. And so whereas during our last time together, we talked about numbers, we're going to talk a little bit about building types. And because they, they engender a level of risk that developers and builders who are used to building a certain thing are going to be somewhat adverse to or, or resistant to. And so those are things to think about. The third part deals with what does this all mean from a policy perspective for Salina? And then the fourth part, which will be a little bit of a lead in into our next time together in a couple of weeks, is, is a bit of a policy agenda of things that a program for Salina will, will need to grapple with in order to be an effective direction to go. We're also, in the third part, going to be talking about some of the things that other cities have been doing and experiencing and some common themes that emerged from, from, from that work. So without further ado, we'll, we'll, we'll move into the presentation. So the, so the first, the first part of what we'll be talking about is just reviewing the numbers and, and directions from our last meeting. So if we could have the next slide and then the next slide beyond that, that would be good. So if you, if you remember, our major assumptions have been that we will be experiencing in Salina as a planning tool, a annual growth 30.3% to 0.4%. This is consistent with the average growth that we have experienced in Salina over the last 30 years. And a growth rate of that level in going forward is justified by the fact that we have a good number of existing jobs. According to the Chamber of Commerce, over 1,100 in the Salina market. So we've got demand for housing. Part of the underperformance is the result of not producing enough and certainly not producing enough on the rental side. We are going to be experiencing significant added growth in employment and have made assumptions that are conservative assumptions about how many of those can be translated into new households in, in Salina. And finally, remember that gross population is not the most accurate indicator of housing demand. Rather, households are. Households translate into, in, into actual housing units. So for example, if we have an aging population, which now actually have a decline in population, but an increase in the number of households, because the number of people per household is declining. And so that creates a housing unit demand, even though it looks like the population isn't growing that fast. So, so, so again, it's important to keep in mind that when we talk about demand, we're talking about households and not just about the, the overall number of people. So next slide, please. When we, when we projected future demand for housing, we assumed a continuation of the current vacancy rate, which you don't think is nearly as high as the American Community Survey tells us it is. But ACS generally will overestimate vacancy in, in, in the survey. But effectively, we're just taking that out of the equation. If we wanted to increase the vacancy rate, we would be showing more housing units than, 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 than we are. It's pretty hard to tell people, well, you should build more so that we can have more vacant units. That's not a real attractive thing to a builder. So, so we just kind of take that out of the equation. We assume that certain amount of housing is going to leave the market through demolitions and conversion to other uses. And as you remember, we are inflating the rental demand a bit over the next five years because of the new jobs that will be created to a 50-50 split. And then reverting back to a more normal in the community, 60%, 40% split for the second five years of this projection period. Next slide, please. That, when, when we project this out over the next 10 years, again, as you remember, we see a significant spike in demand over production that we've been experiencing, really because of the shortfall in production over the last 10 years and because of the new jobs that are being generated and hopefully will be housed in Salina. So we project from now until 2025 or within, within the next five-year period, about 173 unit per year need. We may not achieve that, but that's, that, that's what, what we believe is needed evenly split between owners and renters. And then that will drop down in the subsequent five years because we really can't project future employment growth to a more kind of steady state, 94 units per year with about 60% or 56 of those being owner occupied and about 38, 80, 38 or 40% being rental units. And if you remember, we distributed these over the income strata based on the current distribution of income in Salina and assume that that distribution will be relatively the same. Again, there'll be variations, but, but, but it will be relatively constant in, in, in terms of distribution and percentages in different income brackets. You can see that of the 713 ownership or owner occupied units that we're projecting a need for over the next 10 years, the biggest plurality of those will be under $225,000. Again, not meaning that we can produce those, but, but that that's where a significant amount of the need is going to be. But there's an additional 420 to 430 units in the upper ranges right now. We have, have, have found in Salina and other communities that generally housing production has been in upper cost ranges. And so even though there's a demand for owner occupancy, the single-family production has dropped despite this demand, really because you can't build single-family housing very comfortably in, in the lower ranges of, 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 of this hierarchy. Of the rental units, about a third will, will be in lower income ranges or lower cost ranges. This is kind of the province of public housing, of Section 8, of existing housing stock and so forth. But, but, but again, that need is, is, is there. But again, a significant number of units will be needed and are needed in the moderate and higher end ranges as well, dropping off as we get higher in the, in, in the income categories. So that's what we have to work with. And if we could then move to the next slide. And that is, what is this housing going to look like? You know, we're, we're, we're used to, in American communities, a certain product. And that product has traditionally been for owner occupied housing, the single-family detached home on a relatively large lot. And people are used to that. Builders are used to producing that, that kind of, of housing supply. And, and yet, we're finding increasingly that the cost of producing that from a land, infrastructure and even construction cost is too high for the people, for people who want that kind of housing or, or have traditionally thought about that kind of housing to be able to afford. So, you know, it's, 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 it's interesting that in, in my city, which is Omaha, after World War II, this is really going back in time. But there were a number of housing units that were built for retirees, people, veterans of, of, young veterans as well, who are starting families and creating kids like me, who are, who are baby boomers. And they wanted to buy houses. So the houses that they were buying and getting financing for could be as small as in several subdivisions here, 690 square feet, because that was your piece of the pie. Very few people in, in current times would settle for a 690 square foot house. That's increasing a little bit now too, except they're being called tiny houses. Back then, they were houses that you raised a family in. So, so, so the, the sort of expectation has changed a, a good deal. And there's a price to be paid for that. So, so we're finding, and you have found this in Salina, that the new production of, of houses that meet what builders and developers think is the market for owner occupied housing are increasingly over $300,000. And, and people who are entering the market or, or looking for starter homes just simply can't afford that. So there are other, and, and we see that from the numbers as well. So there are certain different kinds of products that are, that are being built that, that have relevance to, to, to our housing problems in Salina and, and, and to housing problems around, around the country. It also is really interesting how this concept of, of what's become called knitting, missing middle is, is, is become, is, is relevant. And I've never seen a period of time when the issue of affordable housing and the availability of affordable housing is so universal. It, 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 it's something that just happens pretty much everywhere and is, is an enormous topic for conversation. So first of all, I wanted to do, do a little bit of, of definition of terms. So when we look at how the demand in Salina and, and, and you keep in mind that these are kind of our original projections and, and based on construction costs, our experience, on the savings that, that alternative forms generate, is, is, is somewhat original work. But, but we're going to define housing in different, in different categories in terms of what these numbers mean in terms of, of, of physical development. So conventional single-family are what we're used to. The, the single-family house, not connected to another single-family house on lots that will typically range from 7,000 to 10,000 square feet and usually closer to 10,000 than to, than to 7,000. The next category up is what we were, would refer to as small lot, single-family. So these are still single-family detached houses, but they're on significantly smaller lots. So they may be in some cases as small as 4,000 square feet, up to 5,000 and 6,000 square feet. So still detached, but, but on smaller lots, basically achieving some savings by efficiency of infrastructure, a lower per unit land and capital improvement costs that, that when you factor those into the cost of financing can get to be pretty significant. And you see a couple of examples of this kind of housing form. So if, so those would be along the top row, the second and third photographs in. The, the, the second one is, is a new small project in, along Florida Drive in Fayetteville, Arkansas. So a college town. The one in the middle is a project that we did in the 1980s in Omaha called Town View Terrace. It's on the edge of downtown. All of which are small, are, are small lot, single-family detached units. Then we move into what, what I call single-family detached, but what could also be called, I guess, by some duplexes. They, they look like single-family houses, but they have common walls. And they can be either rental units or owner occupied units or some combination of the two. So an interesting way of delivering housing is a single-family attached with an owner living in, owning the building, but, but living in one side of the attached unit and renting out the other one to help pay the mortgage, which is not a bad, not, not a bad way to do it. We then move into low-density townhomes. So these also have a single-family character, but yards, a little bit lower density generally in like an eight to 12 unit per acre range. Higher density townhomes, which are much more urban. And then finally, multifamily, which can be either the apartments that we're used to or some new and interesting multifamily forms that I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about a little bit later. And by the way, if any, if I can get rolling here. So if, if any of you have, have questions as we go through the, the presentation or the discussion, please feel free to, to ask or comment. Don't, we're, we're, we're seeking solutions together here. So, okay. So, so the next slide is, this, this is where, where we're getting original. So, so we have taken the various price points of, of, of housing that we project are needed in Salina over the next 10 years and then broken those down into the categories of building, referring back to what we just discussed, that, 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 that will account for, for, for the splits in, in providing that kind of housing. So we are, we are saying, for example, that if you look across the, the, the top row, that we're, when we're in the under $225,000 range, it is going to be pretty much impossible to be able to serve that market with conventional single-family development. It just can't be done unless there are some significant things that change. So, so our best guess, and keep in mind that it's, it's that, is that 40% of that market can be met by small lot, single-family that achieves a certain economy of scale and economy of infrastructure and public services because of it and land because of its density. Then another 40% will require some form of attached housing, either single-family attached or, or low-density townhomes. And another 20% will be in something like a condominium or a higher-density townhome setting. Very few of, 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 very few people, interestingly enough, in, 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 in this kind of lower demand range are going to be tolerant of condominiums. They're, they're, they, they will not necessarily see the, the, the value of that unit increasing to the degree and, and to compensate for the amount of their net worth that they're investing in housing. So these are mostly townhouses. And, and you can see that we discount the amount of higher-density development that can actually meet the demand of, of, of this more moderate cost housing. So then we move, we, we move up the scale to the degree that when we get about $400,000, most buyers are going to expect that to be in conventional, single-family, but not, not everyone. A certain number will be small lot, single-family, largely seniors or, or older, let's be more polite, let's say, older adults. With seniors are sort of sensitive to that sometimes. And, and in other kinds of, of, of housing settings. So, but, but we adjust that for markets. So we're, if we were doing this kind of an analysis in, say, Los Angeles or San Francisco, the numbers would be very different from that because single-family conventional housing just isn't produced in, 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 in many of those places. Same thing with rentals. But, but it's, it's a little bit different in that lower-cost rentals that is under $1,000 are generally going to be found in higher-density settings. And then the higher-cost rentals are going to be in lower-density settings. So it's a little bit different, it's a little bit different distribution. So, so there's a certain method here behind the madness in terms of how people behave and what types of demands for various forms of housing we've, we've, we've observed over time. And then typically in something like a, a comprehensive plan setting, we'll take this and use, and use these not only to project housing demand, but also to get some idea of how much land is needed to accommodate housing, housing needs. Here we're mostly worried about production and, and products. So if we go to the next slide, you'll see what this means in terms of, of, of overall housing needs. When we distribute our, our demand over these price ranges and building types, we are suggesting that over the next 10 years, and this is very different from the production that we've been experiencing, we'll need about a couple hundred conventional, single-family houses, which is, which is, let's see, what would it, what would it, it would be about 25% or so of the, of the over, even less than that of the overall housing unit demand. About 360 units, there will be some form of single-family development. It'll be on either smaller lots or, or in attached housing forms. Another 394 units in, in, uh, single-family attached and low-density townhomes. So, and then about 384 in higher-density settings. So, so of the units that we project we will need over the next 10 years, you can see that about 750 of those units fit within those quote, "missing middle" categories, which are, which are exactly in the middle columns of this, of this, of this table. So are we right or wrong? I, I don't know because we're, 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 we're plowing new ground and seeing transitions in the kinds of demands that, that number one, people can afford to have and, and to some degree that people want. But, but these are products that we're really not producing. And it's where the majority of our housing need, we think, is going to be in order to meet the, the, both preferences and financial capabilities of, of, of our markets. So there's a mouthful there and I wonder, I think it's probably not a bad idea to stop for, for, for questions, if there are any. If not, I will plow forward.
Marty, this is Commissioner Hoppick. And before we go too much further, I want to let staff know, we're missing part of these pages.
Yeah, every other page.
Every other page we're missing. So if we could ask staff to get those to us in the future, so.
But thank you for mentioning that because I was wondering if it was just me.
No.
Nothing for you. Thank you.
And yeah, some of those pages are significant to review. And this may be a question for, for staff or for Marty. But as we talk about the size of properties and, and you mentioned small homes, which I'm not sure I'm 100% for those, but there is some, some validity in some of that. And also when we look at small lot development, Lauren, we would need to have some variances to our codes to make that happen. Would that be correct?
In some situations, not all. I mean, we have some older lots in town that are smaller. Maybe for some, if we were doing completely new development, we may have to check into that.
Because we have codes that limit the, that require a certain amount of space between units. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, there are times that we can do a development like a PDB if we're going to do a large new subdivision and we could address setbacks for certain product types in there possibly. But if we wanted to do a code amendment, that's also another option.
Okay.
One is on a case-by-case basis. One would be an alternate for a much broader number of cases.
Okay. Okay, that's, I just wanted to, as we move forward, we look at some different products. I think we may have some codes that we're going to have to address at the same time.
I'd, I'd like to chime in on that, on a couple of things. As I, you know, I think as, as we address this issue, we do have to be open towards changing our codes to where we are able to build the kinds of structures that are affordable. And I just think, you know, our, you know, zoning codes probably are still based on, you know, 1950s planning, a planning procedure. And I'm not sure we ought to not revisit that in general and try to make things a little, little friendlier for developing some of these alternatives. The other thing I would comment is, if you talk about a conventional lot of 7,000 to 10,000 square feet, I don't think we've had a 10,000 square foot lot subdivided in Salina in the last 20 years. They're almost uniformly larger than that, at least not single-family. So that's a, a pretty far reach compared to the way we have been doing business. And I'm just saying, that is a, that's a game changer if we're going to be talking about that.
I do have a question. I'm not sure if it's for Marty or if it's for staff. But do we have any sense when the census numbers are going to be available to us? Because I know that you, Marty expressed some concern about Because I know that Marty expressed some concern about relying on the American Communities Survey data for, I think it was for vacancy rates, but I didn't know if there was any sense of when those numbers are all going to be finalized so that we know it.
The first numbers that come out are basically total population because that's what's used for congressional apportionment. And then the other tables, the other information kind of dribbles out. So by 2022, we'll have full information, as full as we're going to get. Later in the year, we'll have population and maybe a few other variables. But, you know, but again, the census's primary utilitarian function, as opposed to people who do research, is overall population because that has political implications.
Gotcha. And then, I don't know if any of the other commissioners saw this, but there was an article in the paper, I think it was last week, that indicated that our population is significantly older proportionately. We have a higher percentage of seniors. And would this still align with the recommendations that you've given us in terms of different kinds of housing products?
Totally, totally. And the problem that we face, and we'll get to this when we talk about the problems, is that when we're building primarily, single-family detached, and primarily, large lot, we're not building what a younger household needs, so they're not coming here. You know, they're going, they're, so, so keep in mind that these numbers are potentials, but they're not prophecies, that they're based on having this type of housing available. There's another interesting issue, too. And keep in mind that everything is based on projecting a perfect match between people's incomes and the kind of house they choose to live in. A lot of people will live in houses that are a real stretch for them, that, you know, people will live in a house or incur housing costs that are 35%, 40%, 45% of their adjusted gross income, and they can afford that as long as nothing goes wrong. But it's a leverage. The mortgage crisis of 2008 was caused by the willingness of mortgage lenders and the entire mortgage market to leverage people too heavily. That is, to, you know, sell them and make mortgages they really couldn't afford. So when things blew up, they blew up really badly.
Yeah. Marty, I do appreciate your comments about the number of individuals per household and housing units. I think we've been, former commissioners have been hung up a little bit on the population growth. And I've said for years that, you know, it's, that I believe the dynamics of the house have changed, and we have less individuals per household, therefore, you know, we've needed increasing number of units. And so I think that does make a lot of sense. We need to look at the housing units needed and not solely at population.
Right, right.
As a point of clarification, our current zoning code for the R1 zoning district imposes a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, minimum width of 60 feet, and a minimum depth of 100 feet. That doesn't mean that we've had development at that size, but the code currently allows for that.
I'd suggest the last development at that size was about 1943, you know.
Yeah, so what's old is new again, is some kind of a problem.
So Marty, real quick, just to also add, I was thinking about something Commissioner France said about, you know, this would be a completely new way for us to think about things. I don't know if it's anarchy or completely flipping the tables, but it would definitely be different. But I mean, the fact of the amount of housing that we are trying to get created in the next five years is a table flipper. I mean, it's a lot. And I mean, if you look at, if I summarize 2018 through 2020, single-family, single-family attached duplexes, and new building permits under commercial, and that's being very, very generous because I don't have any new multifamily in that time. I have some that probably fall under the renovation category. We're at 200 units. And realistically, if we stick just to duplexes, single-family, and single-family attached, it's only 143, and that's the average between those three years. It's not the kind of rate that we're talking about and the amount of space. So we may need to definitely look at things differently.
My reality test is, just in terms of these numbers, is we often think about a really vital, non-metropolitan community, or even metropolitan community, is having an annual growth rate in the range of 1%. That's kind of an aspirational growth rate. And my rule of thumb in my head, and it's almost always right, not that everything in my head is right, but this is, is that a 1% growth rate equates to approximately 50 units per 10,000 people. So 1% growth, so keep in mind that we have taken a 0.36% growth, historical growth rate for Salina, then added the new employment into that, that if you were growing at 1%, the sort of standard rule of thumb, that would be about 250 units a year for a city of Salina's size, and we're projecting for the next five years about 170. So it's sort of, it's a higher growth rate than you've had, but the employment bubble that you are possibly experiencing can support that, at least in our opinion. The problem, again, is that this is a possibility and not a prophecy, in that people can choose to live in other places or might like to live in Salina, which has many features to attract them, simply can't find a place to live, and so wind up in surrounding towns or even, you know, even a greater commuter distance. So people will commute 50 miles to a job because 50 miles on I-135 or on I-70 is, depending on how fast you drive, not that long a commute. So there's a real regional aspect here as well, and we think it's beneficial to Salina and to the people who want to live in Salina to be able to capture as much of that market as they can. Okay, great. So let's move on to some pictures here. So what does some of this, what does some of this stuff look like that we suggest there's a demand for? We'll start with small lot, single-family. So we talked a little bit about the Florida Way Project, which is on the south side of Fayetteville and near the University of Arkansas's Research Campus. It's a very tight, nice, successful little development, and it generates a density of about eight units per acre. So what that means is that these houses are built on about 4,500-square-foot lots, something on that order, and they have rear-loaded garages. So there's no, the garage is incorporated into the body of the house, and they're accessed from behind. Towns at Little Italy, which you'll see in a couple of places, is a single-family attached development, but owner-occupied, and it generates about 16 units per acre. So it's very high-density housing, as high as an apartment project, but it looks like it's single-family units. The development below, which is in Bloomington, Indiana, and I don't know the name of it, I've seen it and photographed it, but that is about five units per acre, which means here we're talking about, you factor in a certain amount of area for streets and sidewalks and so forth. It is, so these are about 7,000-square-foot lots. Town View Terrace are about, in Omaha, are about 5,000-square-foot lots, but it has a lot of common, a lot of open space, big, pretty big yards, and a street on a hillside. So it's gross density, as if you drew a rectangle around it and counted the number of units in it, is about five units per acre. Generally, when we think about small lot, single-family, we're thinking about areas that achieve a gross density, that is, if you include streets and so forth, of about five units per acre. It's kind of in that range. Conventional, single-family development, in our kind of average experience, is something on the order of 2.3 to 2.5 units per acre. So it's about twice that, it's about twice that density. This little project, this project along the major central city trail in Bloomington, Indiana is really an interesting development. So these actually face a trail that faces a street, and these are in the range of about eight units per acre. So they all are single-family detached or semi-detached, but all achieve pretty high densities, and while some of them are pretty expensive, they, that's usually a function more of interior finishes than size or per-unit cost of infrastructure. So let's go to the next level. So this is the Towns at Little Italy project that I was describing to you. That's a single-family-looking project with attached at the garages. So those are garages between the separated units. These are typically about 1,500 square feet, but you can see that the site plan is very dense. So they've got an alley between the units, those, and on what is effectively a block, a city-block depth, it's got a central alley and then another bisected alley, so the lots are very shallow. But it's a lovely, it's a lovely project, and it's been an enormous, enormous success. And it's a model that could be replicated in many smaller cities and even in rural areas. Interesting, it's an interesting project. And a funny thing is that the alleys are sort of more interesting than the front yards are. They're, people have gardens, and they sort of have over-the-back fence socialization like we used to have in, growing up in the 1950s. Okay, next slide. This is, this was a place that we just did a housing study for, and it's a suburb of Dubuque called Asbury, Iowa. And Asbury is adjacent to Dubuque, it's effectively, although it's a separate municipality, it's basically a metropolitan area and neighborhood. And the most popular product in Asbury, which is a place that, again, up until now, had been building primarily upper-cost housing, and wondering why their housing production had dropped from about 80 units pre-2010 to about 30 units now. Again, the reason or the explanation that we think is happening is that they're only building for the higher-end slice of the market. But the most popular product has been this. So these are duplexes or single-family attached units, where a buyer is buying the unit for, say, half a million dollars, and then renting out half of it, living in half, renting out half to essentially pay the mortgage on it. And so these are less dense than even the small lot, single-family development because of their pretty suburban scale. But it's an interesting concept. Actually, interestingly enough, McPherson has been building some of these as well with manufactured units, and you might be, you might have seen these. So another approach to attached housing is this sort of combination of owner-occupied and renter-occupied units. But in a lot of cases, these require some relaxation of zoning codes, and that's something to consider. And you'll see that a number of communities that we'll be talking about have been looking or changing these, their zoning regulations. So it's very appropriate that that subject just came up in our last segment. Next slide. Townhomes. So now we're looking at true attached, true attached units, and a couple of examples that I've pulled out of my hat here, we've got tons of them. The project on the upper side is a semi-brownfield project that we master-planned in Des Moines, Iowa, near downtown, called Gray Station. And this is a really cool project. It's under construction. These are all, of course, renderings of buildings that are underway but are not totally done. And as a gross project, this project, which includes townhouses like the ones on the left, which are lower-density townhouses, higher-density townhouses, and some multifamily, all developed along a greenway system, achieve something on the order of 20 units per acre. So they're really denser than anything we're talking about for Salina, but examples of what this kind of housing would look like. The Huron Avenue example has some personal interest because it's where my daughter lives in Los Angeles. And these are very interesting because they are transverse townhouses. So it's a little project of three buildings with five units in each building, and subgrade parking, half-level below grade. One of the things I think was totally unintended is that this area where the parking is has garages that are individual to each unit, but about a 30-foot common area that's 150 feet long. And so this place is now full of kids, there are little kids, and like my twin grandsons who are about to turn five years old, who ride their bikes and trikes and scooters and bang into walls and play baseball in the parking garage because nobody is there. It's just, it's a secure environment that's gated, so if some, if a driver comes in, one of the residents comes in, who are the only people who have access to it, the garage door opens very slowly and they get out of the way. So they've got a built-in indoor space. So I've gotten to be very high on this kind of housing solution because it seems so well-suited to families looking for affordability. And in Los Angeles, that is, affordable housing is advisory. Affordable housing is $800,000 in Los Angeles. And then a new project in Council Bluffs, across the river from our office, is on the site of a former amusement park called Rivers Edge, used to be called Playland Park. And these are more kind of residential-looking townhomes that are, in some ways, a little bit more conventional in terms of their appearance. So again, significant savings is achieved by common walls and construction scale and not repeating insulation and so forth and so on. In some markets, that savings is estimated at as high as $50,000 or $60,000 per unit. So that would not port over to our market because construction costs are high in those places, but it's a significant savings in terms of their construction economies. So next slide. Oh yeah, this is a brand-new project in Omaha that I just photographed over the weekend that I thought you might find interesting, and these are our new buildings. They're not, it's new construction, but it's in a very urban neighborhood, so it's designed to look like very traditional townhomes. Brand-new project, again, three levels with parking, with parking on a lower level below. But a really lovely project, I think, and I, these are in the range of high 200s to 300s. So next slide. So it's a lead-in into this in terms of looking at multifamily. So it's a lead-in into this in terms of looking at multifamily, which, which, which I think is something that we really need to consider, that sometimes, uh, new housing looks like old housing. And, uh, in the 1920s and then again in the 1950s and 1960s, um, residential mu- multifamily was not necessarily built in giant complexes, but they were built in small, um, uh, buildings and in, and, and in small components. And so, uh, you know, not everybody was taking out multimillion-dollar loans to build even 50 or 75 or 100-unit, um, developments. They were, they were building these very nice and, and kind of high-value buildings in fourplex or, or eightplex configurations. And now I'm going to show you a project that's doing exactly this with new construction. Uh, and it may be something to think about, not necessarily on this scale, but this is a project that's, uh, under construction. The first phase of it has been developed in Omaha. And, and again, we can learn, uh, applications for smaller cities from bigger cities. This is a project called Bungalows at Prairie Queen. It's a suburban project. Um, it will generate, uh, a density of about 23 units per acre. And you can see from the first phase, um, some of these are my own photographs and some of them are from the developer's, um, slideshow that, um, or PowerPoint presentation, excuse me for dating myself there, no, but we still talk about slide decks, so, uh, and dialing somebody up. So, uh, so, so there you go. But you can see that these are small, these are all multifamily rental buildings, but they're small in scale and, uh, needn't all be built at once or even necessarily by the same person. So, um, so, so the scale along the street feels, um, very residential. Uh, the, the, um, the, um, they've been, they've been very well-received in the market. And one of the reasons they've been very well-received has to do in a way, oddly enough, with the pandemic. And that is because this particular project advertises not having any hallways. It's all, it's all based on, on, on entryways as these older, uh, houses also, or older multifamily buildings, um, also, um, also, uh, were developed. So very interesting, um, unusual project, but, but in a way, it's sort of a Back-to-the-Future kind of development. You can see it's also developed along a really nice lake that's a, a flood-control reservoir. Uh, so next slide. Um, so, uh, a couple more views of the, of, of the variation in architecture and some of it's better, some of the architecture I like better than other buildings, but, but it's, it's really interesting stuff and, and, and designed to look like, um, a neighborhood. Um, next slide. And, uh, along the entrance street to it, there are some much more urban-looking buildings that, that look more like Main Street buildings. An interesting thing about these is these have convertible, uh, street levels that could be commercial if the demand existed, but right now are primarily residential. So, so there are, um, convertible, probably studio or, 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 um, limited number of bedroom, um, units. Uh, so, so those, if you, um, I, I don't have access to, um, to a, a pointer, but those, uh, exist along it, this, that kind of through-street over on the left of, of the, um, of the map. But you can see the, um, the footprint of the planned, um, buildings that are, in some cases, very small, 70 by 60 or 70 by 70, but, um, but, uh, creating a, a, a really very different and very attractive kind of apartment, um, environment that, that, that I think is ultimately a lot more compatible with, um, single-family neighborhoods than, um, than, than we usually experience with apartment projects. Okay, next slide. So, good place to stop for air and, uh, any, um, any, um, do you have any questions about our reactions to any of those?
Question for Ms. Driscoll, um, to the zoning or the, uh, and the density, uh, density issues on all of these different housings you've shown us. Are there any things in our codes that wouldn't accommodate, uh, any of those examples we've seen? And we dress them with a PDD?
I guess at this point with the amount of work that we're trying to do and the amount of units, we have to do some code updates. Um, but I, I guess in the scheme of things, it's probably the, the least of my, my concern. If we had to create a new district to get to smaller lots, we could. Um, I think some of these that are conjoined, but they're on individualized lots and without knowing how those subdivisions are divided for some of those uniker products, I can't necessarily answer that, but I think we, if we can't use our arsenal of zoning code right now, we could find something to accommodate these.
I, 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 I often, as, as a former planning director, I, I, I often tell clients that, um, that zoning ordinances were not brought down by Moses from Mount Sinai. They had, they were, there, there's, there's, uh, and, and I guess that's appropriate to the season too, but they're, they're not, um, uh, they, they can be altered and changed to, and, and as you'll see in a minute, uh, a lot of communities are doing just that, to try to, uh, change, uh, ordinances to correspond to what's actually needed in the market. And, and, and there's really a bit of a revolution going on in terms of, um, different forms of zoning and, 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 um, and even some cities that are going so far as to, um, eliminate single, uh, use, single-family residential districts, which, uh, which is interesting. Uh, I, I, um, I, I am not of a single mind about the.
This is Commissioner Hoppick here, and this may be actually a question for, uh, Ms. Tasker, but if we were to look at doing some infill and properties that were, you know, areas that were originally single-family and you were to do higher-density, um, construction, do we have an issue with size of water lines, sewer lines, that type of thing?
I don't know if Ms. Tasker's on the line, but we, we have existing infrastructure in place. We've been, you know, upgrading as needed. And one of the points I was going to make, we've talked a lot about density, um, but what we haven't talked about is the efficiency of infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, uh, whether it's a, an undeveloped site that needs new infrastructure or whether it's a location that might take an infrastructure upgrade, that, that density certainly helps in terms of the cost-effectiveness of, of both the, the development cost, the city's, uh, upfront investment, maintenance cost. And then if we start talking about special assessments or other type of fi- financing tools at all, that, that density carries with it a lot of.
Yeah, because obviously to keep the cost down, if you were doing some redevelopment, if you didn't, if there was not the need for infrastructure upgrades, that helps with the cost because that has to be passed on, so.
Correct.
That was just a.
I do think Martha is on. Martha?
I am on, but I was trying to, uh, listen to the question and I had it turned down so low, I don't know if I got the whole question, but I heard my name and that caught my attention.
Well, at least you're half-awake anyway, so. This is Commissioner Hoppick. Uh, my question was if we were looking to do, uh, some infill development and some of the area we were looking at was originally single-family and if we were doing multifamily or higher-density, would, would the current water sewer systems, the infrastructure be able to handle that or is that a case-by-case review?
Well, I think there'd be some case-by-case depending upon, you know, the multifamily and, um, what fire protection we had available due to a lot of those old six-inch lines and what the demand might be for fire protection. So we'd have to look at that for.
Okay.
Apartment complex or multifamily to make sure we met that need. And then on the, the wastewater side, depending, typically the sewer line is fine, but in certain areas, we have wastewater that's pumped one, two, three, four times and we'd have to double-check the, uh, capacity of our lift stations, you know, to look at the additional capacity to make sure that, uh, we don't tax that system along the way. Because if in the, oh, up north, we have several lift stations that pump one F in, in series with each other to make it to the treatment plant. So just, there could be some concerns. We'd have to, I'd say case-by-case would be the best answer.
Okay, thank you.
That's a long answer, but.
Commissioner Franz, that's kind of a segue into my question. I'm looking at the layout here of the Bungalows at Prairie Queen in Papillon. And, uh, you know, the, the question occurred to me is what was the infrastructure in place underneath and within that? And, you know, for example, the streets, it's hard to know what the scale is here, but are these typical, what, 24-foot-wide streets? Is that what we typically put in?
Yes.
Or has that also been adapted to, you know, perhaps be a one-way street that's 18 feet wide, which of course would reduce the cost?
Yeah, these are conventional streets.
Okay.
But they do have alleys too, so, uh, they're, they're not, they're not overly wide. Generally, in the Omaha area, our, can, our typical local street is 25 feet.
Okay.
So, um. And, oh, and by the way, uh, this is another one of those places that pronounces their name wrong, that, uh, so you, you pronounced it properly as, as it would be pronounced in France, but they pronounce it Papillon as in pavilion, so.
Yeah, you know, it's Nebraska.
Yeah, it's true.
So Marty, you know, these are new housing products to our market. We haven't, it, it's new to developers. Any comments on kind of absorption of these housing products in general and kind of in light of our high demand, uh, at the moment?
Pretty, everything that I'm showing you has been successful. Um, but, but it's risky and that gets into the next, that gets into our next segments.
Could I, uh, follow up? I was going to ask, I was trying to word, this is Commissioner Davis, trying to word a question that was similar to that, but, you know, if you're building or planning for a college community, you know, where you're going to have people who are waiting later before they have kids, they're professional, you know, at most they're two people in their household where they can use a smaller unit, uh, with more common space. They don't need the big, you know, ranch house spaces for horses and dogs. Do you plan differently than you would for a solid, blue-collar community? Uh, and if so, do, do you find that people just basically absorb the, the, the product you have? Or are people holding out saying, "Well, no, I'm going to wait four years until they build the house that I, that I'm looking for"?
My first thought is I don't even know where you're going to hang out and wait out until the house is built in four years.
Yeah, right.
But do, would you plan differently for a city? Let's say Iowa City versus Salina. You know, Iowa City where you, where it's, it's academic, uh, I'm, just from when I've been up there visiting, uh, there are a lot of smaller townhouse developments, similar to some that you've shown here.
Yeah.
Some have families, some are just one or two people living in them, but they were all occupied.
Yeah, I, I know Iowa City quite well. Um, and the answer, the answer is yeah, yes, to, to a degree, to a degree, they, they would. Um, there is a project, um, in, in Iowa City that you might have seen called the Peninsula. It's, uh, it's a new urban, it's a walkable, new urbanist community. It mixes housing types. It does have some bigger houses, but a lot of smaller houses. And, and it's very, it's, it's a very good project and it's very popular and it's very separated from everything else. Um, it's, it's, I, yeah, you're, that, that they're, that, that to, to a degree, um, the preferences are different and, you know, you have, well, there's not an architecture school in Iowa, in Iowa City, but, but, uh, but, but on the other hand, there are, there are demands for, for, for apartments, there are single-family neighborhoods that are being built. Uh, and, and so the, the answer really is kind of yes and no. It, it's, uh, a, a city like Iowa City or Ames has a certain segmented market that would, that, that's more experimental, but also, uh, but, but, but also, um, uh, housing that's built for what we would consider a more conventional market. And, and the point being that, that every housing form, uh, that, that i- is, is, is different and appropriate for different people and there are a lot of different preferences. Um, and, and a successful housing market is building across a range of, of, uh, preferences and, and not just for one, um, shall we say, if we were using biological terms, monocults or building the same thing over and, 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 and over again.
Right, because, you know, I've, I've often heard that, you know, there's no market for certain types of housing here. And my response is, of course, there's no market for it because nobody's built it. How do you, I mean, you can't have a market for something that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
You know, so my question is, will people, you know, absorb what the market produces? You know, may, maybe we got the, the cart in front of the horse here.
And that's where the risk is. That, that is absolutely great point and, and, and that gets into our, our next segment a little bit. Or our next two segments. So, so part three is what are other, what are, what are some other, not, not, I know you're a little tight, you'll get a little bit tight on time and, and I could easy blow through until 5 o'clock, you, you don't want to do that. But, um, part three, what are other places doing? So, so I've got a, a, a sample of places to show you, uh, that, 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 that again are, are sometimes bigger places, uh, maybe in a couple of, but still useful to learn from. Um, Grand Rapids, Michigan is a place that Lauren knows very well. And, um, having, having, being from that area and having gone to school in, in, in the city. And, uh, and, and they're doing some, some interesting, um, interesting stuff. Uh, Grand Rapids had, uh, oh, through, up until a few years ago, a pretty conventional community development program that was primarily CDBG-funded and, and, and a rather productive one. And then since about, uh, 2018 have converted into, um, in, into, uh, and this is partially the result of a declining community development block grant entitlement and the instability of those funds, developed a, a, a more locally-funded, uh, affordable housing fund. So, so this is a fund capitalized by, uh, a, a variety of sources that's used, uh, for financing for nonprofits and, and, and for the housing authority and for, for, for specific kinds of development. Um, the, the fund is capitalized by, uh, as you can see on the slide, city appropriations, um, that are related to tax growth. So it's, it's, it's sort of a, 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 a little bit of a tax increment tinge to it that, that our property values are increasing naturally, so we will take a certain amount of that growth and invest it back into housing. Not a bad, not a bad idea and, and, and a pretty interesting way of, of, um, of, of rationalizing that. Uh, it's a 501(c)(3), so it gets private contributions. Uh, it gets occasionally general operating fund, uh, allocation. And, um, and, and they have a service fee on rental property because they have an inspection program and, uh, and they can direct a certain amount of those service fees into the affordable housing fund. Um, it's pretty new, so we don't have a lot of data on, on what it's produced yet, but it's, but it's been, it, it's been created. Um, has developed in recent years is a fairly significant. Looked at things that have generally impeded missing-middle housing, uh, side lot, side-yard requirements, so the, uh, things that, that, uh, prohibitions against auxiliary dwelling units on a single lot, um, all of those kinds of issues. And, and over the last few years, changed those. So, so their website goes into, um, uh, a good deal of, of review of past accomplishments. And one of the things that I found most interesting about it is all of the, the various zoning reforms and changes they've gone through in order to create an environment that's more friendly to building, um, at higher densities and, and, and with more efficient lots. So worth, worth taking a look at. Um, and, and one, and, and, um, um, and, and one significant approach to, to, to housing issues. Um, next slide, please. Lincoln. Um, Lincoln, um, is, is a project, Lincoln, uh, is, uh, to housing issues. Next slide, please. Lincoln. Lincoln is a project, Lincoln is in an interesting phase as well. Lincoln, Nebraska has now grown to be a city of over 250,000 people. I, as a native Omaha, have always seen it as being a little city, but it's not so much anymore. And although it has a major college community, unlike Iowa City, or unlike Iowa City for sure, or Ames, the college community is a relatively small percentage of the overall housing demand in the city. That it's of a scale that student and faculty and staff housing is important, but it's not as important as it would be in a college town of 30,000 or 40,000 people. So, but Lincoln has, again, an affordable housing problem. We just completed a major study that's a housing action plan to quantify their issues and provide a way to move forward. So they are now completed, have completed the organizational study of establishing what will be called the Lincoln Affordable and Workforce Housing Consortium, and hopefully it'll wind up with a little bit snazzier name than that. Their goal is to produce 5,000 affordable units over 10 years. About, that's a very ambitious goal. And with a lot of conversation, they have targeted rental housing at 40% to 80% of average median income, ownership at 80% to 120% of average median income, which are pretty much the areas that we are probably looking at, too, in Salina. Their focus is going to be on funding gaps. And so they've calculated those at, as you can see, for a $200,000 owner-occupied unit, about $20,000. For a rental unit, something on the order of $5,000 to $25,000 per unit. They're, they're, they're looking at, and this is kind of interesting, they're looking at the work of this consortium, which would involve pooling lending resources into both direct loans, probably through a community development finance institution, a CDFI, and through a pipeline, providing gap financing for projects that are, that are developing. So one of these is more oriented toward direct loans to home buyers, the other two organizations to provide gap fillers to make, and even private developers to make, to make the financing affordable. And so they are now in the process of capitalizing the consortium, and are in the process, I don't think they'll have very much trouble achieving, of a capitalization of $10 million to begin with. So that's where Lincoln is going. Much, they have done some zoning revisions, but they are putting together a financing program that will address both resident needs, owner occupancy needs, and filling gaps in the pipeline to make ongoing projects feasible. Next slide. I also like that picture of a townhouse project connected to a parking garage. I think that's a, we have talked about this kind of stuff, and I've never seen one built until, I was in Lincoln a couple of years ago and saw this one. It's a pretty, pretty interesting project. Omaha. So Omaha has a pretty extensive incentive structure. It uses for most rental and ownership projects in the central city that are infill projects, TIF, and makes pretty liberal use of that. In Nebraska, you can use TIF for rehabilitation, for public improvements, for land acquisition, for a variety of different kinds of things. It's probably not legal to use it for new construction directly. So in fashioning TIF deals in Omaha, they've always been related to things that are clearly eligible uses. TIF was approved in Nebraska through a constitutional amendment in 1980. And then a few years later, we were able to get through, this is now in my era in the city, able to get through rehabilitation added as a clear permitted use of TIF funds. In redevelopment areas, Omaha makes extensive use of blended mortgages. So it uses Home and CDBG and any other kind of thing that can be scrapped together that will subsidize mortgages. So in a lot of cases, these will be a first mortgage that is privately initiated, and then a subordinated second mortgage to reduce the debt service on the house. And here, we've made pretty extensive use of, of that tool and tailored to the needs of an individual household. We have a fleet of community development corporations that are nonprofits that have worked in central city and redevelopment areas. So Omaha has really built very little direct housing itself, and has worked through CDCs and increasingly private developers. We have had, over the years, a lenders consortium. And that lenders consortium has evolved a bit. It started out as a financer, a provider of construction or interim financing to nonprofit organizations. Now it's transformed, it's transferred more into, into direct loans and mortgages to, as well as advisory assistance to homeowners who are not necessarily bankable under conventional standards. So in a way, the Lincoln consortium is a combination of these various histories that Omaha 100 has been, gone through. The name of Omaha 100 was initiated by a goal of developing 100 units of affordable housing per year, 100 houses, affordable houses per year. And I had the interesting experience in the consortium's early history of missing a meeting and being elected chairman of the board of that, which says, don't miss meetings. So we have had, in Omaha, significant philanthropic support as well. So the charitable organization, the charitable community has been involved in housing equity financing and housing development. So the project that you see in the upper, the upper photograph, are single-family houses on small lots developed by a nonprofit CDC. Below is a project on the site of a former public housing project that was financed largely through the assistance of the Sherwood Foundation, which is Susie Buffett's foundation, heavily involved in community development. So it's a pretty unusual financing mechanism, but it shows what philanthropy can do. Finally, we have a device in suburban districts or suburban areas called Sanitarian Improvement Districts, which allow developers outside of the city limits to form a general obligation bonding district to finance bonds for infrastructure. And it's been very effective at building suburban development. And, but it's got some significant public costs, high, high soft costs, a good deal of debt. And in theory, if people didn't make quite so much money from them, they're an interesting technique to use, but, 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 but could be something to think about as a way of financing infrastructure in development areas. However, they should not be exclusive areas outside the city limits. That's not a very healthy thing. Next slide. Minneapolis. Minneapolis is one of those places that has now outlawed or repealed single-family-only zoning. Minneapolis has become famous for establishing mandatory requirements to include affordable housing in new rental projects. So developers of a certain size project are required to provide 8% of their units available to people who are below 60% of the AMI, or 4% to, if 30% of the units are available to people at 30% or less of the AMI, very low-income people. So it's got, that, these programs have gotten a lot of notoriety. Again, they're pretty new, so it remains to be seen how effective they are at scale. They also have a pretty substantial program to keep affordable housing affordable. So they provide property tax abatements for an agreement by the owner of a property to keep units affordable to people at lower than 60% of the average median income for 10 years, and a significant number of incentives for financing energy retrofits. It's called the 4D program. So it's interesting stuff. It relates to both new construction rentals by requiring the private market to do something. It probably is most applicable for a pretty hot real estate development market like Minneapolis is. So these are different faces of what, of what different places are doing to try to address various perceived, or their, of what their specific priorities are. And there are some interesting things that I think we'll be able to pick and choose from some of these, these models. Okay, next slide. I think, yes, okay, Lauren, give me a rest here.
Yeah. Well, I think with all these different examples, Mike wanted to have an opportunity to just highlight some of the things that are going on behind the scenes. In addition to updating the plan, one of the things the commission asked us was, you know, what are we doing, you know, if projects are coming forward, make sure you're prepping those and bringing those to us. So at this time, we have five developers with projects at varying levels of readiness. Two of those have indicated that they plan on having finalized numbers and would like to bring a project forward by the end of April. Staff is also working on a mapping project via GIS in response to, well, you had in your packet, I'm hoping it turned out copy-wise, you should have had two maps in there related to just overall lot vacancies in the city right now. So those could be small lots, large lots, it doesn't matter. And then we're also working through a GIS exercise, trying to kind of understand properties within the community that are usable and optimal for housing development. Some of those may be bigger lots, you know, are they close to utilities, different types of infrastructure, and what is the accessibility, good roads? How do they connect to other parts in the community? How do they work within the comp plan, those types of things? And as we go forward, kind of framing the housing policy component of things, geography is one way to prioritize projects. So if there are certain areas in the community that we're recognizing have the attributes that are ready, kind of raring to go for development, this would provide the information for the commission to at least have that in their thought process and decide how they want to prioritize that. And we've got that kind of synced up to work with as Marty's wrapping up his update of the live Salina plan and starting to create that policy framework.
So let's, let's charge into the exciting conclusion of today's presentation. So implications and directions as we now begin to think about the future. So if we can have the next slide. So there are some general themes here that we are observing. And I'm going to, as probably some of you know, we're also doing a statewide housing assessment for the state of Kansas. So, so we've been talking with, it's at the very beginning of the process, but there are some things that are already beginning to pop up. And we do a good deal of housing planning throughout, throughout the state as well. So general themes that are, that are emerging is that producing affordable and workforce housing is universal. It's universal across the country. And, you know, we're seeing it, we're seeing it in the mayor's election in Omaha, we're seeing it in the infrastructure bill that's, that's being introduced by the federal administration. It is, it's universal. Very few people think that they've got this problem solved, and probably very few people are going to solve it. Most non-metropolitan Kansas cities are using incentive programs to develop housing. Generally, people are reporting that if it isn't, if there's not an incentive, it just isn't getting built. The most common programs are RHIDs and NRP incentives, which, as you know, are basically tax-driven. And we saw from last month's presentation that taxes and tax-driven incentives can be very powerful in terms of fulfilling the gap. In most, most, oh, this is, this is, this is an interesting one, and really quite critical. In most of our clients, in addition to economics and the cost of construction, the single most commonly mentioned word is risk. And, and the most commonly mentioned prescription is risk sharing. That is some sort of cooperation between public and private sectors to try to abate risk. It's interesting that risk takes on a number of different forms, not, not the least of which is our uncertainties in the approval process. So this is particularly true in the Kansas City metro area, where, and excuse me for a second because my wallet just fell out of my pocket, and I don't want to forget that I lost it. So, so a developer can go through a lot of hoops, can, can develop a scheme, put all the numbers and costs together, get to the approval process, and then get their project denied, and that money is all down the tube. Very, very, and this is, this is a particularly important issue when we think about higher-density projects, because there are, there's, there's a lot of opposition to those by people who are established homeowners. And it adds a develop of unpredictability that is significant disincentive to developers. Concerns about the market in general, that people are being asked to build for market sectors that they're not very confident about. And, and this is kind of the reason for introducing the stuff that we talked about in part two of the presentation, exploring unfamiliar forms of development. So, so we have a lot of people who have a lot of expertise in building very high-quality, single-family detached houses on relatively large lots. They don't have very much experience with all these weird things that we're talking about tonight today. The townhouses, the attached development, and the small lot, small, small lot, single-family, they're not, they're not proven commodities to them because they haven't been built in the past. And so, very understandably, particularly when we think that we're not talking about large businesses, but rather we're talking about developers who are really small business people, it's a risky element. So two fundamental program priorities emerge. Number one, how to make the numbers work, that's the gap. Two, how to share or reduce that risk to the things that, that people, you know, well, generally you think are needed, but, but they don't see how they, they don't see how, a clear way by which they can, they can meet that need. Another interesting thing is, that's, that's, that's a little bit of a surprise, that some communities now are saying that they, they need to have seller incentives as much as buyer incentives. That is sweeteners that free up the market. The, the sale market is very, very tight, and that, that is a national perspective. There are, there's, there's not a lot of flux in the, in the housing market. People are staying in their People are are staying in their homes because they're not seeing anything better being built. And and so the stock of affordable or entry level inventory made up of existing units is just not available to the degree that it that it otherwise might be, particularly in the ownership market. So next slide. So what does this, what does this mean for Salina? Well, when we look at our numbers and our projections and our thinking and so forth, we come up with four points, that one, to build for a major segment of the coming market, we're calling on builders and developers to build things they're not familiar with. That's a risk. Housing values in Salina tend to be somewhat low, you know, we we know that. The only place that we get above $350,000 to $400,000 are in the central east neighborhoods around the country club and so forth. Even north of Schilling and and we here, here are our major source of information is a very good one, and that's Zillow, are still in about $250,000 to $300,000 range. There are many parts of the city that are still in $100,000 to $200,000 range and the fact that that the values tend to be relatively relatively low could seem to be affordable, but they but they they constrain the market and that engenders a level of risk as well. Number three, that beyond steady state production, that is the the amount that we're building just in terms of kind of people moving up and wanting to build new houses for themselves. The two factors that that are most at work to increase housing need are pent up demand that people are kind of taking it on faith that it's pent up and the prospect of major housing, major employment growth. And these are risky. It's kind of the old cliche about a bird in hand is worth two in the bush, that the potential is always discounted unless you can actually see the the need. And finally, it's a lot easier for a market to react to employment growth than it is to build it in advance. You 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 talk about having units available for new employees to build to move into, but who's paying for the the holding costs on on those when until those new employees move move in? And that entails risk as well. So 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 we can, we can understand why the market in Salina builds or doesn't build in the way that it that it does. It is a, it is seen by 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 the local development industry as being a risky market, or at least one that involves leaps of faith into the unknown. Next, next slide. So what are what are possible public policy priorities for Salina? This is kind of a coming attraction slide. What are the criteria by which you can evaluate whether that's a place to invest public funds or public incentives? Well, one is, we're not saying these are, this is the program, but these are things to consider. Density for efficiency, cost effectiveness, cost to the to the prospective buyer or renter, and economy of urban services. And by the way, density may be actually a bigger incentive or a bigger issue related to affordable ownership than it is to affordable rental development as we as we kind of saw from last month's presentation. New residential formats for workforce affordability. So if if you're, if we're asking you to build something as a developer that's riskier because that's going to produce more affordable housing, we're willing to help share that risk through it through through an incentive. Speed, projects that are on hand and and opportunities that present themselves in the short run to accommodate employment increases that are coming and that will both attract new employees into the city and provide an inventory by which by which people can can move in. Scale, large enough projects to create a mass and to accommodate specific demands. Rentals, because that's where the real emergency seems to be right now in the short term, and that might convert to something else in in the longer term. And finally, and importantly, not finally, but sixth, preservation of and conservation of the existing housing supply, because we really can't build ourselves out of all of the city's housing needs and 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 demands. So all of these priorities entail risks that, as I've said before, modestly sized builders and developers just feel reluctant to take on alone without without a partner, without some help, without having to mortgage their kids, those those kinds of those kinds of situations. So finally, last slide. So so as we now contemplate where we move in the future, some some ticklers about where we might want to be going is to build resources for strategic investment on both the gap side and the pipeline side. The 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 gap side being filling gaps in 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 terms of of owner occupancy that that make the difference between bankability and affordability and not. And the pipeline helping encourage the kinds of housing that we believe are going to be needed. To demonstrate a demand, to engage builders in more diverse areas in the city and more diverse types of housing. To resist, to reduce risk factors, factors to the local residential industry, to keep our our local builders and developers engaged in it. To involve industries who are generating demand in in employer, employer assisted housing solutions that that will help them recruit employees and and take advantage of the demand that they're creating. To diversify the products that Salina is offering to its residents, both old and new, and to maintain our existing housing supply, because it's still going to be, as 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 we often say, the majority of our affordable housing in the city is already on the ground. So the beginning of thinking about the structure of a program. So on April 19th, when we're back together in a couple of weeks, if you can stand listening to me drone on for this long, we're going to be looking at possible tools and techniques that that have applicability to Salina. And then on May 10th, the outlines of a strategic program for the city moving forward of some of the solutions that that we think will will work here and 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 can help us achieve the the goals that we need. So there's, there's our, there's our presentation for today. Hopefully, a lot to digest, a lot to provoke thought and and your comments and questions are welcome until until you have to go to your real meeting.
Well, first of all, thank you very much. Speaking for myself, I I really feel like we're getting into the the heart of the matter, so to speak, not only with this presentation, but the ones we've got coming up in terms of next steps. So thank you very much for providing us kind of that foundation of knowledge to help us make better decisions for our community going forward. Are there any, are there any questions from the commissioners before I see if there are any questions or comments from the public? Because I noticed we did have a few people on here. I don't know if any of them wish to speak, and I I don't know if there's anyone there present in room 107 either.
I just have one, Commissioner Davis. Mr. Sugar are there, you know, if if the cities, and I'm say city meaning government in whatever form you want to use it, subsidizes or eases some of the risk in building in advance of pent up demand. In other words, you know, we tell them the thousand jobs coming, but they're not here yet. If the city subsidizes that building, are there programs where the city gets to recoup some of the benefit of having supported that risk?
Yeah. Interesting, interesting question, and one that we'll get into in coming weeks in terms of the structure of a program. But yes, let me give you, give you a couple of examples. And I don't know exactly what Kansas law is, but in Nebraska law, a city can can write a TIF project as a loan and can provide an incentive, including a grant incentive or a grant of land to a developer, and then pay itself back out of the TIF. That that is, that that is one example of such a situation. There are shared equity programs by which, by which the city becomes an entrepreneur along with the developer and and receives a share of the of of the profit or operating income from the project or 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 a reimbursement on the sale of the project or 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 conversion to a different kind of use. So yes, there are, there are structures that can be created that that allow the city to to benefit from equity investments and projects. Another, another example that we have, we have thought about is something that we call an infrastructure bank. And so the concept here, let's say that, just to give you an example, let's say the city invests $10,000 in the price of a $200,000 house that's that's related to building infrastructure to support the construction of that house. These are not accurate numbers, but they're easy for me to calculate in my head. And that's 5% of the value of that house. When that house sells presumably for a profit, the city would then recoup the same 5% out of the ultimate purchase price of of the house on on sale. So if that, if the value of that house goes up to $220,000, the city would then recoup $11,000 of that sale as opposed to the $10,000 that it put into it in the first place. So so I think honestly that it's wise to structure as many programs as we can and and that are legal to do under Kansas state law, which is where we need attorney's assistance to to provide a level of return to the city from from the 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 benefits that it's produced and in by by its investment. So it's a very good point and and something that is, I think, really a fundamental thing that we want, that that we seek in terms of the structuring of programs.
Commissioners staff has had conversations with representatives of Gilmore and Bell about options. Admittedly, the focus of those conversations have been RHID, tax increment financing, industrial revenue bonds, and community improvement districts. We kind of scratched the surface maybe a little bit of the concepts, or at least I think we were asking the right questions down the path of what Mr. Sugar described, but we may need to get get him involved with those conversations and have a more pointed conversation with scenarios and see if we can play any of those out.
I do think that if if a city is taking some risk too, it should get rewards for it.
Everyone else in that whole system is making money off of it. I don't see any reason.
Might as well, yeah, you bet.
Marty, this is Mike Scragg. I could touch on a couple of things. In your last presentation, you talked about, you had the hypothetical scenario of an apartment complex and a couple of the, kind of the bigger ticket items that seemed to impact the financial performance were the rate of return for the investor and the interest rate. And you and I haven't had a chance to talk, but I think you assumed a 5% rate of return, which I am concerned that's overly conservative, that that might not be worth a developer getting out of bed for. But I guess my question is, in a not-for-profit scenario, can you speak to how that might help the numbers, both from a interest rate borrowing standpoint as well as a fixed rate of return standpoint?
Yeah, well, first of all, five, it's 5% cash on cash, but not a 5% rate of return. So 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 if you, that, so if if you, if you assume that a project, that's why tax credit projects work so well, that that they're, they're, if you're, if you're getting the 9% tax credit because of the nature of the project billed as a Lytec project, your annual rate of return is automatically 9%. If you get 5%, and then and then you have, then you factor in the eventual sale of that property and 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 your commensurate share of the of the equity on sale, they get pretty profitable. So so so, you know, keep in mind that that's, that's cash on an annual basis. And depending upon how the the actual structure of the project is, if it's, if it's a tax advantage project, such as an historic tax credit or a low income housing tax credit, the rate of return is considerably higher than that, even at zero cash on cash. So so it's a little bit more, it's a little bit more complicated than that. But 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 yeah, you're right, that a 5% rate of return would not get, would would not be enough to get a developer interested in in a project. Now, let's see, now, what's the other part?
The financial benefits of the not-for-profit approach.
Oh, yeah, 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 great, yeah, yeah. So so the, so the benefit of a of a nonprofit is is twofold. Number one, they don't have, they have to support themselves, they don't have to make a profit or or return that profit to investors. Number two is that they're usually funded by sources of funding, whether it's charitable or CRA related or municipal related, that are patient in terms of 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 their returns. And finally, nonprofits or CHODOs, community housing development organizations, have have a specific priority for Lytec funded or or incented projects. So 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 there, but but mainly, a nonprofit's risk structure is very different from a for-profit developer. Their, their, the nonprofit, the nonprofit executive director's family is is not going to directly suffer from a project that doesn't produce income.
So Commissioners, the other thing I would tell you is, a couple of slides ago, it was kind of a gradient of criteria, and I think the conversation was on the premise that incentives would be adjusted in response to, you know, whether those criteria were met. And so Ms. Driscoll mentioned that we've been in conversations with about five developers, and I would say one of them feels like they have a proposal before us and they're anxious for staff to get it before you. And then some others are a little bit, maybe a step or two behind that. A couple of them are kicking the tires and one of them, we've reached out to and we're trying to entice them to give us a line of some consideration and run a financial performer of a product that they do in in other markets. So it's kind of the entire gamut. But I guess my point is, the developer that's probably the furthest along in that conversation, I think they're assuming maxing out all the available incentives in terms of tax redirection, the amount of tax redirection and the term of that. And so that's not to say that that might not be necessary for the proposed project, but we are trying to look at their finances to get some more detail on their proposal, analyze that in terms of kind of a cost benefit and a gap analysis and and then in light of the different considerations that we're fleshing out here. So we recognize the the sense of urgency, we're not expecting to try to have a formalized policy and however far out in the future that might look, but we are trying to kind of balance the request and and those discussions with the information we're gathering as part of this process.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commission? Because if not, I would like to open it up to anyone who's participating either virtually or in person. If you've got a question or a comment, we are running short of time. So if you're in person, please step to the podium, continue wearing your mask, and we welcome your questions or comments. And if you are participating virtually, if you could raise your hand on Zoom, or if you don't know how to do that, you activate your camera and wave your hand physically, we'll be happy to 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 call on you. Do we have any takers for the public component?
It doesn't look like we have any in the room. Anybody on Zoom? I don't see any hands raised at this time on Zoom, if anybody out there. I don't see any hands raised at this time on Zoom if anybody out there is interested. You can do it now.
All right. Well, again, thank you very much, Mr. Sugar. Thank you very much, Mr. Riscall. I really appreciate it and I'm learning a whole lot about, about housing. So, thanks again and we look forward to seeing you in a, in a couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks.
All right.
Enjoy the game, enjoy the game tonight.
Is there a game tonight?
Yeah, I think so. I was, I was so hoping for UCLA. Such a cool team. And, and the women, the women's game was incredible last night too, but.
That's what I, that's what I heard. Well, at any rate, thanks, everybody. And we will be back here at 4 o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you.